Hello, I will call to order the Lincoln City Council regular meeting. Today is Thursday, August twenty first. It is six P M. And we will start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And under your, if we can get the roll call please.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Antonia?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Bjornstein?
Here.
Mayor Brooklyn?
Here. And number five is our agenda approval. Make a motion to approve our agenda. I, I would actually entertain a motion to add under old business, uh, our Park District. Discussion of the sponsorship, yes, as uh agenda item number twelve. Make a motion to approve the amended agenda. We have a motion by Councilwoman Davis is her second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Councilwoman Antonia. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And so moved. Number six, we have our consent agenda, which entails seven thirty twenty-five special minutes, August seventh twenty-five council minutes, and eight, August eighth twenty-five special minutes, and then August payables.
Make a motion to approve our consent agenda, the special minutes, council minutes, um, eight-eight special minutes, and then the August payables.
We have first by Councilwoman Davis.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Bjornstein. All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And so moved. Uh, next is our public comment period. And we have any submissions through the auditor's office. Then, okay, so we'll open up the floor for public comment. Second call for public comment. And our third final call. Under old business, uh, we have the Lincoln engineer updates. Are you speaking for today?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Campbell. Um, I am here on behalf of Loretta as she is patient right now just giving update for uh the city engineer uh ongoing work items. It's not the formal engineers report, but just an update on what's been going on last couple of weeks. So, um, there are four submissions for the MPO that needs to be reviewed for the um, the tack board. Um, so Loretta will be reviewing those on behalf of the city of Lincoln. Um, and that was for the um, Bay Area study that's going on. There was four submissions for that. Um, so she'll be reviewing all four of those and getting back to the MPO with her scoring on that. Um, there is a special use permit in progress uh that's being reviewed, uh, waiting for the application to be submitted though, um, but there's ongoing dialogue about that. And there's also some other permit applications for accessory buildings that's being reviewed. Um, there is one residential lot development application that's um, been reviewed and approval letter in process to be um, sent out. And there are two different um developments that are um being coordinated to um, call a public advertisement for uh, or public hearings for um bringing those forward to council. So, I know that there is some ongoing discussion between um uh, previous uh, city engineer Greg Fraser and Loretta on uh, one of those, the turkey medals one uh, brand taxation. So that is um, ongoing and hopefully wrapped up here soon. And there is a um, the bridge fourth edition, um, there's a pre-application meeting coming soon for that. That is my understanding, that's being coordinated um, as there was some miscommunication between developer on who was coordinating that. So Loretta is working to coordinate that with the city right now. So, uh, in addition, there's been um, uh, quite a few residential requests uh, for information on different concrete type work items around the city that Loretta has been answering. Um, that's, that's the report that she wanted me to give. So I, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
So that, that fourth edition bridge, is that with um Bruce or Antonia?
Um, that is, that is the Mariner.
Mariner.
For the, for the division hill. So I think they would like to start the, the pre-planning process for, for that next phase.
Thanks for the first question. Any other questions? Brina?
Thank you.
And we have um, under old business, agenda item eight ordinance to amend commercial grade dumpsters, second reading.
Um, yeah, this is the second reading to um prohibit the use of commercial grade dumpsters or uh, any larger um containers than thirty gallons in residential elements uh without any valid permit.
We need a motion to approve, right?
Was this bed and all amendments uh, more changes to the ordinance as the first reading?
And we had the first briefing on the seventh, I believe, uh, August. Which is a council.
This one need a public hearing?
No.
And this one is, is already on in the city ordinances. It's just clearly defining those commercial grade, even though the previous version still had the thirty gallon difference.
Yeah, and, and this uh allows for a, an enforcement mechanism. The previous ordinance was there, but there was no mechanism for how the city would enforce violations. So this um this amendment permits the enforcement.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty twenty-five. We have the first by Councilwoman Davis is their second.
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Bjornstein. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And if we could get the roll call please.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Antonia Bjornstein?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bjornstein?
Yes.
And then the item nine is our council compensation. Second reading. Antonia Bjornstein?
Um, yes, this is also the second reading. This um, is approved um, um at the August seventh um, regular council meeting. This is updating the salaries for obviously council members.
And the mayor?
Uh, yes, and the mayor.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number uh, twenty twenty-five concerning um the compensation for mayor and city council. We have the first by Councilwoman Antonia. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilman Davis. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
If you can get the roll call please. Shoemaker?
No.
Antonia?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Bjornstein?
No.
Mayor Brooklyn?
Yes.
Alright, so next on the agenda, uh, city center update. I just wanted to share a little of the information on a hundred hours. Um, now, so I do have one for the auditor to put in. You're back there. But I just wanted to share a little of the information uh in the maps. You'll see that fourth edition is what uh, has been getting talked about, worked on uh as far as possible location for a city center. Been working with the developers, discussions um because in that uh bridge second edition, that's that fact dedication right across from that to south would be uh approximately four point eight-five acres. Looking for location for a city center slash uh, community center or city hall slash community center. Uh, you know, and what that might look like uh, as far as building at this point, you know, that's not so much the discussion as getting the land. So when we do have in budget uh funds to start the project, we have the location uh, for it. And if we have that city center, that main street, we could bring in you know, not only that city hall, that center hub for the city itself, but to allow uh, maybe a grocery store, a hardware store, you know, uh boutiques or, or however that gets developed, yeah. So uh, one thing I did want to point out is, we've been talking to, now I have made no commitments. Uh, these were just discussions, uh, because this will be a, a council decision. And uh, when the development came in, and they said this is gonna be great for Lincoln, this is gonna be great for Lincoln. Well, what's gonna be great for Lincoln, moving from a bedroom community to a community with our own set of capabilities. And that means bringing in some businesses, that economic development. And uh, so they had said, okay, well, where, where could we put this? And uh, if we were to go on this route, have that community center, work with parks as far as getting all that, again, that's years and years uh, down the road. But I did want to find out that one of the things is uh, you'll see the colored map across is you've got, you know, north of Dolan, you have Third Street, you've got Main Street, you've got Fifth Street, and uh, South Second First. So that is aligning numerically versus the the uh, Calgary names, which could be beneficial for the city to set it up uh more traditional to other cities. Which would also aid in uh, the street naming, numbering changes in city of Lincoln to allow us to more advocate for our own zoning code. Because we don't want to have competing addresses with that same five A title or with this partner. So, I, I just wanted to give you an idea of of the discussions, the location of uh, where that city center would be. And that is just informative at this point. So, questions, thoughts?
I didn't see how this would develop. It could be very expensive.
And, and they are moving dirt to where it could be down into that area sometime later in the fall. So, it'll be fun, a lot of work to come up that, so now changes for the city. More amenities, right?
Yes.
Uh, public hearing scheduled September fourth regarding the storage containers. And uh, this attorney, may I have it updated?
Um, yes, so the public hearing is scheduled for uh, September fourth at the regularly scheduled uh, city council meeting. This is to amend um, the zoning ordinances and the it's because the, the portable storage container portion of incidental uses falls within the zoning code. And any zoning uh, amendment weeds and requires um, a public hearing. And so, it's the amendment isn't um, an unusual ordinance. It's compliant with, or it's matching what this work has done um, allowing uh, limited and specific uses for portable storage containers um, for like things like moving um and, and those kinds of things. So this is um, just a a necessary step in, in adopting the amendment ordinance.
Uh, I, I have a question. I was driving by today and I the only ones that I'm thinking are the ones off of sixty-six. So, the person that owns those storage containers, will, will that be grandfathered in? Is it gonna be a requirement to move those is?
Are you talking about um, like the storage units?
No, the storage containers that are being used as storage.
Um, I'm, I guess I'm not entirely sure what um specifically your
The ETA in? Are they annexed in?
Yes.
Yes.
Are they like, are they, are they shipping containers? I guess they are.
Yes.
Um, I don't believe they would be grandfathered in. They would um, would have to apply for that, I believe, um.
But that being a business already running, pretty much?
That is, and, sorry, I don't know. Um, I can go back to you on that. I guess, and that what I have in my head is the, the storage containers, just a little ways down the road. Um, I thought those were for storing like the, the developers' materials, but I could be mistaken on that.
Uh, are you talking about the ones like right on, yeah, just down here? Uh, those, if I'm not mistaken, are being used by a couple different like landscaping companies.
Okay.
And using for storage.
Okay.
Do they have normally trees and stuff too outside of them? On, on the edge and stuff? And I just, I just don't know. You don't have ways thought about the effects of a business. Right, I don't wanna have him actually get out just because he's
I had somebody raised concern a lot of the time as well. And my understanding is that those storage uh, those shipping containers are being used there because they can't legally put permanent structures under those coloring lines. And so that's why this was a way for them to be able to use that property in a storage manner. Uh, but part of that concern that was brought up to me was in regards to that. What is, in the ordinance, it says that if it's not being used in temporary nature, that it could be taxed as real property. My question is, what dictates what a temporary nature is?
So, it also depends on what zone that land is in. So if it's in residential, residential is the the area that they need. Um, that's the temporary use. But if it's different, or if it's applied differently, if it, it brings in all categories.
Nothing quite that relevant.
So if it's in commercial, it is something that that
Right.
Oh, right, yeah, that's where the part where I mentioned, it says that a container that is not temporary in nature would be subject to taxation as a real problem. My question is, what is considered not temporary in nature? Like, is there a way to clarify that? So it's sort of clear on what is temporary and what is not temporary? Like, is it gonna require some kind of anchoring structure? Is it the amount of time that it's sitting in there, like?
Electricity runs through or not?
Yeah, I feel like there maybe needs to be a little certification before this could act.
Is it? Cause I, I agree with Councilwoman Davis. Um, you know, we don't certainly want somebody out of business. You know, especially since they've been operating. I mean, cause those have been there for years.
But I got to see that zone differently, I think. This should be in the clear and not be affected, because this is residential only, right? We're not classifying it.
But it's zoning.
It applies to, yeah, so it provides some, some restrictions for each zone, I'd say. So, the temporary um, is more focused on residential, and then there's certain
Portable, for, for
Right, certain restrictions versus the other um, zoning classifications as well.
Yeah, so we should really close your day long. I would include that. With that, I because this, I mean, they, they would obviously still be paying property tariffs.
Uh huh.
And bills electricity, they're running out of it. So there are a lot of things I'll say. If we could take a look at that, you'd see.
Yep.
Any other questions that or comments?
The only other thing, I was kind of wondering regarding the residential areas. Um, people can get a permit to use, these storage containers for a bit thirty days. My question is, would you want to actually, I, I maybe I'll check that again. It says that they are permitted for a period, not just three thirty days. And I don't believe it says they have to get current to have the storage container. And if that's the case, I'm wondering if you should really have it set up that it prevent what you need it. Even if it's not something that they have to pay for it for, but just so we have something and knowing at the start of the thirty days.
Well, that's smart. Protect everybody, the city and the occupant of container. And then we have a timeframe.
Yeah.
So, so we'll take a look at uh, the nontemporary in nature. Now, the one concern that comes with me on that part of it is if these are leased out, they would be temporary. Right, even if it was a two-year, three-year, six-year lease.
Or it'll be this, this one, yeah. Um, yeah, and, and I'll just look to make sure um, the zoning and can figure that out um, on that end for these permit forms. Um, if they're using that it as a business where people are leasing those storage containers there, um, I'll have to check to see if there's a different definition that might be applicable to that rather than these portable storage containers, if that makes sense. There might be um, now, you tested my, my knowledge of the, the zoning definitions, but there might be some other definition that those could fall under.
Better.
Yeah.
Perfect. Appreciate that. And so we're not is the second reading would be that September fourth?
Correct.
So because we do not have that, do we want to keep that public period scheduled for September fourth with revisions to come prior to September? Yeah. Any other questions, Kevin? Okay, good deal. Uh, agenda item twelve, the Park District sponsorship or the grant?
Yeah, um, so this is just a quick update. So the Lincoln Park District met on Tuesday night this week and um, made motion to adjust the previous proposed um, transportation alternatives program. Um, if you recall, the previous project was going to have a section of pathway that was going to extend west on Lincoln Road from fifty-seventh Street. Um, the discussion has been that they would like to try that and move towards just doing the lighting along the pathway that's being built between Lincoln Road and twenty-eighth, and then to also add lighting along a stretch of pathway from um, Santee Road to the south southerly limits, so the city of Lincoln along sixty-sixth. So, that pathway is not built. They do have a recreational trails and parks grant to construct that pathway next year. So that pathway will be going in next year. Um, and so their plan would be to then only light the pedestrian share use pathway along all of sixty-sixth Street. And basically complete a northeast and southwest section of shared use paths throughout the city. Um, so they would like to amend that application to do the lighting and not the pathway. Um, they also had some financial concerns about that is that it was a pretty expensive chunk of path to construct. Um, and knowing that they have um, park plans um, in the red edition that they'd like to start saving monies to develop. Um, so this is a way to continue improving the park, um, the share use path systems uh, throughout the city of Lincoln. Lighting them for safety concerns. Um, and then it would also be paving the one that's gonna be built next year because that one is just going to be gravel uh, due to the nature of the grant. Um, so it would be paving that one also. Um, so since the city of Lincoln is the sponsor to that, um, they wanted to bring it before the city and let the city know and make sure that the city is still okay with sponsoring them for that type of a project change. Um, essentially, it's the scope change. Nothing's been submitted to the MPO or the DOT or anything yet. So it's still in preliminary draft form. Um, but it's going to be submitted far, so.
Is, is this the grant heading south that the Park District was, was awarded?
Yes, they were just awarded that um, through the recreational trails and parks um, grant through the North Dakota Department, um, North Dakota Parks and Recreation. Um, so they were awarded funds to basically construct all of the earthwork um, and the gravel portion and any color drainage work for the section that will go south to the city limits. Um, and so this next grant, which if you recall is to be in um, twenty twenty-eight through the North Dakota Department of Transportation's transportation alternatives, would then finish paving that pathway and then install all the lighting. Um, so it's a little bit less cost. It's still close to five hundred thousand dollars worth of lighting and paving. Um, so they, they still have a financial burden of that, but um, they thought that that might be um, better application use to complete the existing pathways within city limits.
That's exciting, right?
So if there's no objections, that's what the Park District would continue forward with. Um, and I did also want to bring forward that uh, at the last meeting, um Attorney Rodney did ask about what sponsorship requires. I have called and emailed the DOT, uh, Local Government Agency with no response at this point. But um, through doing a lot of reading on their website, essentially the city of Lincoln would be a project owner. You would be required, um, financially required for that project. Um, and so as was discussed last time, it, we definitely need to have an agreement between the city of Lincoln and Lincoln Park District about the financial responsibilities and the um and the project development responsibilities for that. Um, and separately, there would need to be another agreement about the future maintenance of that um of that. Uh, so there would need to be two agreements drafted between the city of Lincoln and the Lincoln Park District for this project, so. That's, that's my understanding of what I can ascertain from the documents that the Department of Transportation has available.
So this agreement, uh, that would be between the city of Lincoln and Park District, that would be provided by the Park District in the original draft for our city attorney.
Um, yeah, I suppose that would be appropriate to um, bring something forward. I anticipate there would be some comments from your attorney. But we can certainly work to put some together between the two parties.
Yeah, good start, I'm sure. So do we want to have a roll call vote just to solidify that we're So do we want to have a remote call vote just to solidify that we're aware of this and that we're still okay with? Bringing it forward?
Sure.
Understand?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Or Tavia?
Yes.
And Schumacher?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have thirteen under your business automobile parking discussion.
I asked for this to be put onto the agenda. Um over the past few years, I've had people telling me how. There's been warnings on books basically saying that people can't park campers, boulders, cars or whatever. On grassy areas beside their garages. I looked and looked and looked and. Asked around, the only thing I could find even remotely related to this is this ordinance nine, three, ten automobile parking. Looking through this ordinance. All this ordinance says is a dictation that. There has to be a specific amount of off-street parking. Uh with this all-weather proof surface. In which case essentially any concrete driveway all acts as that. Nothing in this ordinance that I can find actually says somebody can't park beside the garage on grass. So I think we want to make sure that we aren't issuing citations to people. For parking campers, poles, parking wherever might be beside your garage or. Anywhere on their property, you are. The rail here, a boulevard, if we don't actually have one, it's unfortunate, you can't do that.
Makes sense? Just wanna select number three on here, just that note.
That's still a great preference in the wired parking space. Which is. Which if you go into it, it talks about the amount of required parking space. Or the different types of dwellings, businesses, et cetera. So like for a home. They talk about like the dwelling units and the square footage required for off-street parking. So as long as a concrete driveway covers that square footage. That ordinance is met.
But we do have ordinance that parking. Uh campers require a camping or a camper pad submit.
Which, cuz I haven't seen that.
There is one, um. Can't think of the exact section right now. Um there is one, it's the beautification section of the zoning ordinances.
And some lots of grandfathered in on that one. With parking on gravel.
Uh that piece I'm not aware of, but I I was looking at this, um. Uh or I came across it when I was looking at a different issue. Um. Uh I can get the specifics to council on this, but. Uh there is this ordinance in the code already, but it's located in the beautification area.
Cuz I looked around on Municho and did multiple different searches and something I can find.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden. And then I stumbled across.
Okay.
Uh and but there is one, I'll I'll get that for um for counsel review.
If you could, I'd appreciate it, just to make sure that we are doing something we should be using.
Well, and I think that uh. Addressing the beautification ordinance as a council is really important because. There are so many uh. Violations, and that was one of the things that uh. You know, if we can look at the ordinance, what are the issues that we want to address in the beautification process? Rather than doing piece by piece, I think that we as a council need to have a copy. Of the ord- the beautification ordinances. And go through them step by step, so maybe we should do that at uh the next meeting. Just so we can address some of those. And maybe not too late from now, that might be short. To like this morning, but definitely this fall be before people start planning for projects for next year. And new builds come. It's one of those things, it's uh we know those auto- automobile parking discussions are automobiles. That are parked, they have to be registered. And have current titles or registration that correct to.
They still have to be registered with state, and if they're parked on the street, obviously they have to be insured.
But we definitely should make it easier to find. The ten of three, some of those, so.
Maybe to make our uh ordinance as more accessible on our website, that's for sure. Click on and find, you gotta go through multiple different areas to get to where you want to go.
Alright, so we'll start working on that, and if you will. Anything else?
Also, and uh if your attorney can provide a link or a a source to where. It actually stated in our ordinance, that's basically what I feel like you're looking for, so.
No, and I and I know there's the can't prepare, um the parking on grass, I'm not entirely sure. Um might be in included in like the traffic code section. Um for prohibited parking data measure, uh but for specifically for can't prepare, that is addressed. Um and I'll provide that to you and and see if there's anywhere else on the through the parking.
Okay.
Right, section nine dash zero three dash one three. It states that um. No landscape terrain should be used for parking of vehicles, the storage or display of materials, supplies, merchandise.
What was the number of that?
Nine dash zero three dash one three, I have the number three.
I'll just I'll take a look, I'm just looking online, sure, I'll be able to thank you.
Alright, we'll carry on to your agenda item fourteen, the attorney report.
Um I don't have all that much to update on, um. Other than I have three new uh items uh to get from this meeting, um. Other than that, Monty is still um working and discussing the um. Waterline fix, uh the city of Bismarck. Um and we're still looking at the transfer of the employee pensions. Um and we will um. Get back to answer on that, I don't know if it'll be um on the September. The first September, but. If not, then then it will for sure be on the second. But other than that, I don't have anything.
So we'll carry on to our portfolios. And let's start with Councilwoman Tavia.
So for the administration office, thank you to Auditor Tony for providing an update. Ashley has been doing utility billing and did a civic plus webinar webinar with Tammy. And helping police, the police department with animal dona- donations along with their daily tasks. Tammy's been working on step and grade for budget purposes along with the employee handbook. Along with her daily tasks, Tanya has been on budget items and working on the July statement along with her daily tasks. They all answers, answer the phones and help do the walk-ins. And that's all I have to report today for the administrative department.
Okay, Councilwoman, you're on stand.
Police departments has been continuing to um. Control the neighborhood, um continue with community involvement. I know the chief uh got a little wet in the dump tank here at community at the Lincoln Days. So it's great to see our police involvement in that, and a lot of kids had fun checking out the police vehicles and talking to some of the officers. Um they're continuing to work on uh getting the funding together for a potential canine unit. And I will say congratulations to Officer Edwards, who is graduating from the law enforcement academy, so.
Congratulations, you're fine. And you have a question uh with. The canine. Or with. The uh animals. There's been a lot of question regarding furry friends contracts, if they should be supporting vocal and. You know, why are we doing? Taking these pets in rather than taking them there for.
Or are you just for pets? Cuz I believe furry friends is helping with some stuff currently.
I know we've had this conversation many times, all that, but it's still. It's presented.
Absolutely, there are council members, uh hey, um so. I saw those posts as well, we've never had a contract with anyone. Uh I've never seen a signed contract, we've, the city's never had a signed contract with anyone. Um when I started last September, um our twenty-four hour access was taken away to disco pets. So we had to figure out what we're gonna do with dogs overnight, like we had nothing. Uh thankfully, that worked out, where we didn't have to shelter any dogs overnight, um. Furry friends is a rescue, and they don't take animals until it's a last resort. So by our policy, by our ordinance, we have to hold animals for three days. Um whether it would have been at just for pets or now in a holy facility here on um at City Hall. We hold them for three days, if nobody's come forward, if we can't reach who belongs to, then we reach out to the rescues and. Then they come and they either say, yeah, bring him by, we can take care of it, we'll find him to foster, or they say, can you hold it until we get a foster in place? Um so that's kind of where we're at now, um. They won't, and I shouldn't say that, they won't, um they don't typically take in animals that would be. You know, like us part-time, um cuz a lot of our animals, it's very seldom that our animals are abandoned out here, I mean, I think we've had three. Since I started, um and two of them went together just the last month, um. But. Most of them are animals that belong to the community, um and it's. We can't get back people back and get it back to people because they haven't been registered with the city, um they don't have a microchip in it. Um so we hang on to it till somebody sees our Facebook post um out on social media and then they contact us, so. So that's why we we've never had a contract with anybody um out there and in place and. I think it was just this spring is when just for pets notified us that, hey, we're gonna do something else with the space that you guys have been utilizing. Um so unfortunately, you know, you can't bring pets here anymore, so.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Councilwoman, you're on it.
But even with it being super nice out lately and moisture, those yards are definitely growing faster than what we like. And so make sure that we are keeping up on our yards and are we maintaining our front yards, um we can look nice. If you do see something um in your neighborhood and or um. Commercial area, there is a form online that you can submit and send it into the office. That way, Public Works then can take action, we can't do anything unless you fill out a form, so just keep that in mind.
If I have one, Councilman Schumacher.
Um Public Works is doing their daily duties such as mowing, uh cleaning up. It in the old shop for for the police officers, um I did notice an item, a single line item on uh August payables. Uh check four one six eight nine, there was some reference to a useful truck, pump, trainer, ticket truck for nine thousand seventy-seven dollars fifty-seven cents. Being that it's a single line item and it falls in between the seventy-five hundred fifteen thousand dollar threshold that we had set for uh. Uh now council approval, portfolio holder approval, I was just wondering if that was for separate items, it was locked into one um one check or what?
You're talking about equipment, Sheriff?
Yes.
Counsel there, so that line item is. Kind of falls underneath the emergency deal cuz we worked on a pump. Out at the list or the list station out at the lagoon, and we were inspecting the pump. And the impeller was cracked on that pump and one of the pieces was broke off. So it wasn't working properly, and we had to order another one and. Like everything else, it had to get shipped from Sweden, so it took way longer than anything else to get here. And we ended up having to be in a mad dash to get something to pump, sell one. Up to sell for, otherwise we would have been in an EPA disaster, so. That is why it is a nine thousand dollar rental of a pump. To make sure we did not get a huge fine from the EPA.
Okay, I appreciate the explanation, I just I just stood up to you and I thought, hey, I didn't hear about this.
Yeah, so it was. I think it was a couple months ago or something like that.
Weekend.
Yeah, so it it was a while ago that we had to do that, but um. Yeah, it just, we we did the project when the the lagoon was low, we started it. And we were like, okay, we should be good to go, we won't have to worry about it, we should get the parts in before anything happens. Well, then that was the time we got all of that rain, and then. The antidote started sinking in, well, it was sinking in because. The water was going in the crack in into the sewer, so. It filled the lagoon even faster, so. It all just kind of snowballed downhill from there and we did not get helped out a bit, so. You have no problem.
And also wanna say, from the court, this was very intense during Lincoln Days, we we hope to uh increase efficiency of communication next year and make sure that. That we can uh have everybody involved, and it was it's a success, success nonetheless, but uh more people, the merrier, so. We'll learn that next time.
I heard the phone party was a a big hit. My 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 youngest definitely enjoyed being around the phone party, I'm like, oh yay. Great to know, as I'm out of town.
Yeah, I think it's it's definitely worth saying that um they truly knocked it out of the park, I mean, it was an amazing time. And I think core memories were made by so many youth and adults at this year's Lincoln Days, so. Kudos to all of the team who helped and got involved and participated in anything.
Uh under. I don't know, they've taken some toll calls in the office and they have really praised. Today's committee in the range, so it was coming.
Wonderful, good.
Uh and I will touch on that in just a second, at first, under my portfolio, I do want to share with you that my. Work on obtaining the zip code. Continues, um I did receive an email from Senator Kramer's office. Um just to read it to you, I did connect with USPS contact in DC. And he reached out to headquarters regarding your appeal, they did confirm that they're currently working on it. Uh they didn't provide a timeline as to when it would be completed, but they said they're working to complete it as soon as possible. My contact told headquarters official to keep them updated, so when they have more spec- uh specifics. I'll let you know when I have more information, headquarters knows that there is a congressional inquiry regarding your appeal. So hopefully that will move things along, I have reached out to uh DC and to. Uh this individual, Senator Kramer's office shared with them that in this new development. Uh specifically in that city center area that we have changed and approved using numbers. And so hopefully that will have an impact on that and getting us uh more of the. And so hopefully that will have an impact on that and getting us uh more of those sales to our sellers. I talked a little bit about this northwest corner of that city center area and uh talked to a community center, there's a a new community center in partial that has uh and is attached to city hall and I don't know if we're ever going to entertain their combination there, but in their facility, they have you know, a swimming pool, administrative offices, um, gymnasium, room for overflow and and parties. Uh, you know that Lincoln does not have a safety shelter and theirs has one of those uh area locker rooms, multi-use family rooms. So I plan to go take a look at at this um golf simulator room. I don't know if we're going to do that, but um I think we have some very opportunities you know, to to address some of those, I just wanted to share that. I did attend the uh Lincoln events, relevant meeting last night, it was about three hours. Uh, a lot of good feedback and they were very happy with it, they too have seen all of this stuff online. Um you know, there there was frustration over um a few things, one of those is streets weren't parked or blocked off and the tires set out, uh, safety issues, you know, those those come when a public works typically takes care of those and that wasn't done, so that will make sure that we need have that for next year. Uh I thought it was nice that they had offered to if they had you know, some of the trucks there for the tug truck that they would not, you know, that they could just park it there, but they didn't receive response back, so unfortunately, we lost a great opportunity, even though it was committed to showcase the new equipment that the city has. Uh, so hopefully we can come back from that. Uh, they're one of the things, the hot dogs, Dakota Community Bank did a wonderful uh job, they had provided five hundred is what they anticipated needing. Uh, they actually had a couple hundred extra hot dogs that they went and grabbed and and brought over and those were done just as fast, so great turnout. Uh, Crystals had aces. All aces, all aces out at theirs, they had five hundred wristbands. They went through all of that too, so it was an amazing weekend, a lot of events, a lot of community. Uh, the vendors wonderful, so uh, we did have an overwhelming show of support for one of our logos. And so at this point, uh, I can share with you that it was the established nineteen seventy-seven with a little trail that goes through that, um, and we did get assigned waiver from the infillable, so now it's just a matter of the city getting that vector and then maybe going to back or or another organization to um get it up and ready for council approval on, why not? So that's exciting. Um talking about MPO, shared with the grants, so I believe that's all I have. Remind for this.
Yes, and I think there were a lot of kids that had fun dunking.
That was cold, I was the first one.
You probably had the worst out of it, honestly, Ben.
Yeah, it was fun and then at first Katie missed it, so it comes up and it's and that set the tone, yes, yeah, lots of fun. So uh, I didn't get yours, but I did hear that there was a bunny that attended the dunking, so thank you, council. Uh, Shoemaker and your staff, that was wonderful.
My first one was a little chilly, but after that, the rest didn't seem too bad.
Alright, it's that initial shock of the frost, right, that sense of, okay. Okay, so now we move on to the others.
And as I said on the day of working on the budget and the change and all that, do you think we need to say a couple more grocery hearings prior to the finalization? I don't know if you guys want to put a date for that, no time?
The next one is September fourth parade of the meeting.
Particular day of the week that works for everyone or usually works about a part of?
Thursday. Yeah, Wednesday or Thursday. So when is uh Labor Day? The first Tuesday, first? We have public hearing. Regular meeting. Do we, okay, when uh, when is the last deadline, I mean, or?
Public hearing is September twenty-fifth for finalization.
Okay, perfect, so we would be maybe something that's uh the third or Monday or Tuesday that's already. Yeah, or the.
Do you want to do in this coming Thursday in case we have a second after that?
Yeah, twenty-eighth, next Thursday week.
December eighth.
Yeah, at what time?
Same time, six P M.
Does that work with you then?
Yep. So August twenty-eighth at six P M.
Yeah, for a special budget evening.
And that gives enough time to publicize it, right?
Three hours.
Yeah, three hours, yeah. As soon as.
That's now.
Uh, yeah, it's like a, it's a reasonable time after the meeting has been set.
So do you want to set a second one or you want to wait till after the August?
Because start with that one and then if we feel like, uh, well, after that, we can set one at that week.
Works for me. And other than that, I'm more passionate passing our stimulus from the office, so I had a couple of days off before making sure it didn't work, telling him I'm going in yesterday for a nurse and nurse, can be we're trying to get that all taken care of. What was that? We do invite and come to the office, there's always a follow-up, so it's nice.
Again, I'll be there again.
Best work today, then, when you first time.
You sound a lot better than did at the beginning.
Yeah, it's it's twelve days of antibiotics, a P T.
Alright, well, then if there's no other business before council?
Just that maybe we should look into Top Call as a fun feature for Lincoln. I mean, we don't have one in the areas of Bismarck, maybe that would bring in a lot of people, we'll end it on that note.
Great, give us seven o'clock and we stand adjourned.